Good afternoon and happy Friday, everyone. Feels like deja vu because we're here again after a previous public hearing on our 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report on March 31st. We're here again today on April 14th to provide the public with an update regarding our HUD-funded activities and programs and our outcomes in 2022. You can find the full caper online at stlouis-mo.gov/cda, at the Public Library where we have a nice hard copy, and again, and at CDA offices as well. And look forward to going through some highlights with you all in this presentation today. Let's move on to the next slide. So our agenda today, we're going to talk about why we're holding a public hearing, the need for citizen participation. We're going to talk about our entitlement programs, the funding that the city receives from HUD, and the process that we use to award it and report on it. And then we're going to dig into the outcomes associated with our four entitlement programs: CDBG, Home, ESG, and HOPWA. So let's start with the purpose of the public here. So we published our draft caper for review on March 13th, 2023, on the city website and at CDA offices, and issued advertisements in the St. Louis American accordingly. We initially planned to hold our public hearing on March 27th, and unfortunately, due to a citywide Zoom outage, we had to reschedule it for March 31st. This hiccup resulted in us no longer meeting the required two weeks' public notice requirement, and that is why we are holding, in addition to our public hearing on March 31st, this public hearing today. And the purpose is really HUD requires citizen participation at every step of the process, and we're going to go through the process in a moment. But the purpose here, there's no decisions or policy being made in the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's really just a record of our accomplishments, and its purpose is accountability. It's to keep us accountable to HUD and to keep us accountable to the public. Next slide. So what does the process look like? Again, the city has four entitlement formula programs. These are CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home, which is focused on affordable housing, ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is administered primarily by the Department of Human Services, and HOPWA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, which is administered by the Department of Health. And all four of these programs go through the same process, which is, or at least go through the same process up to a point. But the similarities are summarized here. It all starts with our five-year plan, our consolidated plan, which we submit to HUD every five years. The last one was submitted on November 15th, 2019. The next one will be submitted on November 15th, 2024. And essentially, again, it's our five-year plan. It tells HUD, here's what we have identified as the city of St. Louis, as our major challenges and obstacles, and here are our priorities, and here are our goals. Here are, here's the amount of housing we want to produce, the amount of public services we want to provide, et cetera. And so that's the first step. We tell HUD, here's our five-year plan. And we collect citizen input on that at every step of the process. Then the next step is that each year, we produce an annual action plan. And so we've got the five-year plan, and then we have an annual plan about how we're implementing the consolidated plan. And in order to produce the annual action plan, again, we start with a public hearing, right? Here are our priorities for this year's funding allocations. Then we conduct an RFP, a selection process, where we invite the public and nonprofits and private entities to apply for CDBG funding. Home and HOPWA, Home funding, HOPWA funding, and ESG funding is RFPed typically by the respective departments on the other side of the action plan. And then we appropriate the funds, and so that's a board bill. And that board bill says, the set sets aside the funds for particular purposes. And again, the CDBG funds are actually set aside for specific entities because we conduct that RFP on the front end of the appropriation. But the ESG and Home funds are appropriated more broadly and more flexibly to ESG funds to the Department of Human Services and HOPWA funds to the Department of Health. And Home funds are all for housing production. So we allocate our Home funds pursuant to our Spring Housing Production NOFA, which, as it happens, was released this week as well. So we can get, we, the Board of Alderman passes an appropriation bill, and it's also approved by the Board of Estment Oportument, and that also includes a public hearing at the Board of Alderman. And then we submit our action plan to HUD. And that action plan is due 45 days before the program year. So our 2022 program year, we submit that action plan to HUD, November 15th, 2021. We enter into a grant agreement with HUD. And then 90 days after the end of the program year, March 31st, 2023, we submit a Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to HUD, where we tell HUD, here's what we did, here are our outputs. So again, it's kind of a logical process. You start by putting together the five-year plan, then you put together a annual plan. Then you do the work, once the funds are appropriated and the action plan is approved by HUD, you do the work, and then you tell HUD what you did. And we are currently in the, that reporting phase for program year 2022. Next slide. So here's just a quick overview of the eligible uses of each of these funds. And essentially, CDBG funds need to fulfill one of three national objectives. And these are, they need to benefit low and moderate income individuals. Those are individuals under 80% AMI. AMI stands for area median income. You can find the AMI tables on the CDA website. But a good rule of thumb is that for an individual, 80% AMI is under $53,000, and for a family of four, it's under $75,000. So that's one of the eligible three national objectives. The other two are elimination of slums and blight, essentially demolition, greening, and similar stabilization of vacant buildings, et cetera, and urgent needs. And good examples of urgent needs are, and these are typically special allocations of funds, like CDBG CV, we're focused on responding to the pandemic. And the CDBG DR funds, Disaster Recovery Funds, are focused on responding to floods or other kind of crises. So the, so all CDBG funds need to be used for one of those three national objectives. And typically, it'll be for one of the first two. Either you're supporting low to moderate income families or eliminating slums and blight. Home funds also similarly need to benefit person, low to moderate income individuals, but they must be spent on housing production. Whereas CDBG funds may be spent on public services, social services, youth services, senior services, et cetera. Finally, ESG and HOPWA. ESG is intended for, to serve our unhoused neighbors with basic shelter and essential supportive services. And it's essentially, the city uses it for outreach and for emergency shelter and for homeless prevention assistance to persons at risk of losing housing. And HOPWA, its eligible use is to support and provide for the housing needs of persons living with HIV/AIDS and their families. Next slide. Great. So one of the first tables in our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is this one, which summarizes the total number of individuals served in their demographic breakdowns. And you can see here that we supported, and by we, I really mean our partners, because CDA does not provide services directly. We fund our nonprofit partners that provide a wide array of services, which we'll detail shortly. But our partners supported over 5,500 individuals, including 4,400 Black or African-American individuals, over 800 white individuals. And you can see the other demographic breakdowns on the slide here. It's worth noting that this total number is actually an underestimate because it does not include certain programs which are considered low to moderate area benefit. So one way that you can benefit low to moderate income individuals, typically, the default is that HUD requires us to income verify every individual or our subrecipients to income verify every individual. But the other way that we can do it is by assigning a program to a particular geographic geography, a low to moderate income area, which is a geography where over 51% of that geography is low to moderate income. So we don't count, those individuals are not counted, and those programs are not counted in this total here. Next slide. So how do we spend our CDBG funds? Well, in 2022, we spent 3.59, or not spent, excuse me. We allocated and committed $3.6 million to public services. Let me say a word on this. Public services are, in many ways, our most popular and in some ways, our most impactful funding category. However, statutorily, we are not allowed to commit more than 19% of our CDBG award to public services. There's an exception to this, however, and that's our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. Unfortunately, a few years ago, the city's Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas expired. But something we're working on in this year is to reestablish those so that in program year 2024, we can provide additional public service funding in those areas of the city which have been disproportionately impacted in our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. So 3.6 million towards public services, about 6.4 million towards a variety of housing needs, including housing production, home repair, and homeowner assistance. Another 1.75 million was allocated to LRA to support their law maintenance work and partnership with the city's Fourth Street Department. 750,000 was allocated towards economic development, including micro lending, small business loans, facade improvements, and other minority MWBE supports and other programs. 1.7 million was allocated towards public facilities. This is a really exciting category of funding. In the past, we've supported the renovation of recreational centers. In FY, in program year 2022, we supported the construction of Launch Codes Tech Force Centers. We're supporting Economic Empowerment Centers, and it's a really flexible category, provided, of course, that it is a facility that is open to the public and serves as a community asset and meets those, one of those national objectives. And then another 1,050,000 was spent on rehabilitation administration. That, that's really CDA administration. And then another 3.75 million was spent on planning and administration. And funded entities here include the city's Planning Department, the City Councilor's Office, SLDC, and CDA staff. Next slide. So let's dig in now to our key outputs and outcomes of our public service programs. And we'll start with youth services, because it is such a priority for the city and for the mayor to invest in our youth and in our future. And you'll see here that our partners, including Herbert Hoover's Boys and Girls Club, Jean Slade's Girls and Boys Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Girls Inc., Northside Youth Services, and Mission St. Louis, provided over 1,600 low to moderate income youth with after-school, summer school, and case management services. In addition, we also supported our seniors, about 1,500 seniors, in partnership with the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging, North Newstead Neighborhood Association, Northside Senior Services, and City Seniors. We supported 1,500 seniors with meals, transit, recreation, and other services. Next, we also provided food access to over 1,250 low to moderate income city residents through Carondelet Community Betterment Foundation, City Seniors Food Outreach, and Guardian Angel Settlement Association. And this really understates the impact of these food pantry services, which actually serve, provide, provided thousands of these services. But in fact, many city residents go back week after week on a regular basis. And so, in fact, the total amount of meals provided and food provided was far greater. Next slide. With respect to workforce development, we've, CDA-funded Employment Connection, St. Patrick's Center, the Urban League Save Our Sons program, to provide job training services to 570 city residents and provided 144 successful job placements. With respect to homeless services, our partners Covenant House, Hope House, and Doorways provided transitional and permanent supportive housing to 342 residents, including 97 homeless youth. And with respect to neighborhood beautification, Operation Brightside, Gateway Greening, SLICO, and North Newstead Association conducted over 300 cleanup and beautification events, thousands of graffiti removals, and I think this is really exciting, built or expanded 15 community gardens and orchards. And so excited to continue and deepen this work moving forward. We also had a variety of other programs which provided healthcare services to over health services and screenings to 670 low to moderate income residents, childcare services to 93 residents, reentry services to 91 low to moderate income residents, and landlord training to over 200 individuals. And so you can see how impactful the public services programs are and why we are advocating at the federal level for Congress to lift that statutory 19% cap. It's actually a 15% cap, but we're grandfathered in under the former 19% level and why we're also working to establish our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas so that we can establish geographies of that city which are exempt from that 19% cap. Next slide. Next, let's talk about housing, which is really our bread and butter here at CDA and what we spent the most funding on. And it's really broken apart into two big projects, one of which is home repair and the other's housing production. And I'll begin just by zooming out and articulating a little bit about our strategy here. And that's that we really want to invest in housing as diverse as our city because we believe that there's a range of housing needs in St. Louis. And there's about 20,000 residents in St. Louis with tenant households under 30% area median income who are at risk of eviction every year. And it's so critical to provide this community with support. The city sees between 10,000 and 15,000 evictions a year, a little under 10% of our total households. And so it's really critical to invest in permanent supportive housing targeted under 30% AMI. And that's been a big focus of our housing production awards recently. In this, so that's one prong of it, the eviction and homelessness crisis. The second prong is the, just the affordability crisis. We have over 50,000 households in the city of St. Louis which are cost burdened. And collectively, they pay over $200 million more in rent, mortgage, and utilities than they can afford each year. And that's why housing production is such a core part of our strategy. But then a final piece is really about owner occupants and owners who are cost burdened as well by maintenance, as well as mortgage, property taxes, utilities. And of the cities, about 60,000 homeowner households, at least 15,000 are cost burdened. And many of them are under 30%, 50%, 60% AMI. And that's who the home repair program is really for. It's for owner occupants under 80% AMI who cannot keep up with the maintenance needs of their home. And we see an extraordinary demand for this program. This past year, we provided 581 major home repairs, including roof replacements, collapsed or laterals and water lines, HVAC upgrades, and electrical panel replacements to 155 low to moderate income owners. In addition, our partners Harambe and Mission St. Louis also provided 64 minor home repair services, and the Building Division provided lead remediation services to 90 units. These are wonderful programs, and we're working to scale them. Our goal is that with ARPA funds, we'll be able to hit. Currently, we did about 200 homes this past year. But we want to, our goal long term is to scale up to 500 homes in a year. But that'll require deep partnerships with contractors, and we're working to develop those and deepen those constantly. In addition, we had a great year of housing production with 131 affordable rental units completed. Those were primarily Phase 1 of Preservation Square, the development in the near north side, a critical geography of our city, as well as the completion of seven affordable for-sale homes. We also currently have over $28 million in CDBG and Home Funds committed to projects in the development and construction pipeline, including 150 for-sale homes and 377 rental units. And then finally, something that we do is that we try to attach homeownership assistance and down payment assistance to the for-sale homes that we complete and sell, and support the housing partnerships work to provide these down payment assistance grants elsewhere in the marketplace. And also excited to expand this in the coming year with ARPA funds as well. Next slide. So now I'll talk just briefly about the Emergency Services Grant administered by the Department of Human Services. And you can see that this, on this slide, that this grant has supported over 1,700 households over the course of this past year. It's a smaller amount of money total, it's $1.5 million roughly. But it supports really incredible work, including shelters at AmeriCorps St. Louis, Gateway 180, Peter and Paul Community Service, St. Martha's Hall, City Hope and Peter and Paul Community Services, Covenant House Missouri, Our Ladies Inn, Doorways, Eppworth, and Biddle House, also on the near north side, as well as supporting the administrative costs of the Institute for Community Alliances, which supports, provides the data analytics and data support to the Department of Human Services. Next slide. ESG also support, I'm not sure this slide is quite right. Can we go back, Tommy? Thank you. Although, actually, this is, okay, excuse me. So as you can see, ESG also supports the variety of rapid rehousing and prevention work conducted by Doorways, St. Patrick's Center, and the Urban League, and supports street outreach conducted by DHS itself, which conducted outreach to over 150 unhoused individuals living on the street in 2022. We also rehoused over 100 individuals in 2022 and prevented nine individuals from becoming unhoused. Next slide, please. And that's our totals in terms of when you sum all of those different pieces up, the rapid rehousing work, the prevention work, the shelter work. The shelter work makes up the bulk of those 2,000 households served with 1,764 of them. But they're all wonderful and important programs. And the city as a whole provides over 600 shelter beds currently, which are funded by both ESG funds as well as COC funds and other, some city general revenue funds as well, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Next slide. And here you can see a demographic breakdown of the 2,000 households and individuals supported with ESG funds. And you can see that the vast majority are between the ages of 25 and 60, but there's also a very large population, six, almost 700, which are under the age of 24. So just a huge population of youth. And it's something we've seen statewide with the population of young people in foster care going up about 40% in the state of Missouri. And we can see it in these really sobering numbers showing that a disproportionate number of those serves by the ESG grant are youth. In addition, you can see that the unhoused community and those supported by the ESG funds are disproportionately male with an important community of transgender and gender nonconforming individuals served as well. Next slide. And moving forward in 2023, the Department of Human Services anticipates allocating emergency services grants for these same purposes: prevention, outreach, rapid rehousing, emergency shelter, data collection, and affordable housing. Now we're going, we're going to talk a little bit about the HOPWA grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. And the purpose of this grant is to assist low-income persons living with HIV/AIDS in obtaining housing and other supportive services. Many of the clients served by these funds have mental illness and substance abuse problems. And stable housing is really a precondition to improved health outcomes and to ensure that they have access to their medications on a regular basis. Because without a regular address, without a regular place or point of contact for that medication, without stable housing, dealing and controlling HIV/AIDS becomes all but impossible. So HOPWA is again administered by the Department of Health, which conducts regular program monitoring to review program deliverables, refine reporting, assess training and technical assistance needs, as well as monthly desk audits, where they receive monthly programmatic and fiscal reports from their subrecipients and monitor those deliverables. Next slide, please. So the Department of Health provided $2.2 million in funds in 2022 for the following activities: tenant-based rental assistance, facility-based housing, short-term rental mortgage and utility assistance, supportive services, and housing information services. And as we'll see on the next slide, they did this in deep partnership with two subrecipients. Next slide, please. These are Doorways as well as Peter and Paul Community Services. So Doorways is an interfaith nonprofit organization which provides housing and related supportive services for people affected by HIV and AIDS. They recently, last year, opened a new campus on North Jefferson, which is a really fantastic and state-of-the-art facility, which houses, if I'm not mistaken, I want to say 60 individuals and households, as well as providing administrative offices for Doorways. It's a really impressive building. It's so thoughtfully designed, including onsite maintenance workshop as well as a room design to really help sanitize and ensure that households and individuals moving in aren't bringing in bedbugs or other sorts of issues. It's just really state-of-the-art facility and an impressive effort and collaboration with a broad coalition of public, private, and philanthropic supporters. And HOPWA funds, while they did not contribute to the actual construction, although CDBG and Home Funds did, HOPWA funds fund the annual operations or a portion of Doorways' annual operations and providing these services to this critical and vulnerable community. In addition, Peter and Paul Community Services receives an allocation of HOPWA funds. And Peter and Paul is focused on providing housing and supportive services to our unhoused community, especially those with mental illness and living with HIV and AIDS. Next slide. So in total, HOPWA supported over 700 individuals and households in FY, excuse me, in program year 2022, including nearly 500 individuals who received rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, 140 individuals who received tenant-based rental assistance, 60 units developed with HOPWA funds, and 23 units in transitional short-term housing facilities. And with that, I believe that brings today's presentation to a close. We'll pause here to take any public comment. And I just want to really close, actually, by thanking our team at CDA, who drives all of this work and without whom none of this would be possible, as well as our partners. um as well as uh our partners, uh are are uh who really are responsible for taking our administrative uh work a- and and putting these funds uh to work for the community uh for low to moderate income individuals for neighborhoods. Um and so um i- it's really a great testament to this work uh uh to their work um a- and appreciate them. So with that, um we'll pause for any public comment. Yeah, I don't believe uh we have uh any questions at the moment. And so um I'll give it another thirty seconds, and then if we hear no questions, uh we'll close out this public hearing.
Noel, could you give an email or someplace someone could contact CDA if they had questions after this meeting? Let's say when it is posted to YouTube or something like that.
That's a great idea. Um well, anyone can email me at F E F E R N at St. Louis dash M O dot gov. Um Tommy, what is our uh general info email? All right, it's CDA at St. Louis dash M O dot gov. That's S T Louis dash M O dot G O V. All right, hearing no questions or comments um from the public at large, uh we'll close this uh hearing out. Um thanks all.